Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, July 18th, 2005. This evening, City Council first is meeting in a public hearing to consider the Green Hill subdivision rezoning. And then at 7:30, City Council will be meeting in regular session. So Jim Sands, Chair of the Planning and Development Committee.
Okay, we're going to start our public hearing regarding the subdivision, which is in the Andover-Berkley Drive area. There are 25 lots there, I believe, 25. We looked at the maps around. This is a public hearing where Council will listen to your concerns, your suggestions, your comments regarding this proposed rezoning. It's already gone through the Planning Commission. They've recommended that we accept that, that we might have to have the public hearing first. This evening, we will listen to your comments, take note of them, and then, but we won't actually discuss anything tonight. We'll have a future committee meeting where we'll discuss this plan and ordinance that will go through and then be voted up or down. Tonight, if you've signed this paper, four of you have, I'll call on you in order that you sign that. I'm gonna, generally, we limit people to about three minutes. We'll be a little lenient tonight, since there's not very many of you speaking, but keep it succinct. And when we go up to the microphone, please introduce yourself and give us your address. The first speaker is Jean Wutkowski.
Good evening. My name is Jean Wutkowski, and I reside in 24 Berkeley Drive in Athens, Ohio. I am one of the individuals who signed the petition. My husband and I have been residents of Berkeley Drive for over 20 years. And we, along with other Berkeley Drive and Andover residents, have signed a petition requesting zoning from R3 to R1. I might add that the only individuals that I know that are opposed to this petition, that did not sign the petition, are those that do not actually reside in that neighborhood. For the most part, all the residents have signed that petition and are in favor of it. It is the desire of the Berkeley Drive residents, and I think I speak on behalf of some of the others that are here tonight. It is our desire to maintain a family-oriented neighborhood. As I say, we've lived in that neighborhood for over 20 years. We've raised a family there, and it's been a very good family neighborhood. Even addressing the Athens Comprehensive Plan, which addresses the need to maintain the integrity of neighborhood communities, it is our desire to do that. This whole issue came to light most recently when one of the homes in the area was purchased, and it became known that this individual perhaps wanted to do more than just have a single resident dwelling, and even more than an R3 dwelling, and that this individual would seek variances to that end. This is of great concern to us, because it is a family neighborhood. Also, some of those variances would require parking, as is required by the city, to make it into more than a three-family dwelling. That creates problems for us in regard to any digging in that area. The hills in that area are pretty fragile, and in fact, many years ago, there was a slippage there and caused a home to have to be moved. For these and other reasons, as stated in the petition and outlined in a letter that I have sent and that others may, in our neighborhood, have also sent, this is why we're requesting that this petition be acted on favorably, and that we move to change the zoning from R3 to R1.
Thank you. Let me just clarify something. This is in response to a resolution by the Planning Commission, about to request to rezone 25 lots, which constitute the Green Hill subdivision in its entirety, from R3 multifamily to R1 single-family residential. There are 25 lots. The petition that Ms. Wutkowski speaks of has 22 signatures.
Okay. One thing I might add, which may be able to be clarified by one of the other speakers this evening, is that deed restrictions for the Green Hill subdivision indicates that only single-family dwellings could be built, and that that area was never intended to be R3. However, when the Athens Apartments were built, and those are some of our neighbors, and we've been good neighbors for apartments that have been built in the area, that's when it was changed to R3. And that was intended to be for the apartments and not for the residential area of Berkeley Drive.
Next speaker, Paul Wutkowski.
I live at 24 Berkeley Drive also. And I only have a couple of things to add to what my wife had to say. It seems as if where we have rental properties in the neighborhood, on our street and on Andover, those rental properties are not cared for as well as the houses that have ownership. The one up around the corner on Andover, about a month ago, I think raccoons got into the trash when they put it out, because they put it out the night before, and the cans were knocked over and trash was spread on the driveway, both sides of the driveway. And that stayed there for at least three weeks. They picked up the trash cans, but the trash just laid out, and I wish I would have taken pictures of that. It seems to me a homeowner would have taken care of that, but renters won't. The house that was recently purchased, a couple doors up from us, they don't cut the grass regularly, and right now, it looks as if we've been visited by a spaceship and we're doing crop circles. But not inside crop circles, outside crop circles. They went with their lawn mowers and cut a big circle around the center of their property, and the grass is about a foot tall where that is, and cut on the outside, and it's been that way for the better part of a couple of weeks. Now, I don't know any other homeowner in that neighborhood that would do that with their lawn. And it isn't because of the rain, because all during this time, it was quite dry and they could have easily taken care of it. So it's a difference between people taking pride in what they have, and renters who don't feel a responsibility for what they're, where they're living, or their neighbors. And that's one of the things we want to eliminate too, if we can. Thank you.
David Lusti.
My name is David Lusti. I live at 10950 Shadow Creek Road, and I own a rental house at 17 Andover Road, which I lived in for a couple of years as my principal residence when I represented the Second Ward as a City Councilman in the City of Athens. I'm here because I'm concerned about the proposed rezoning, that it may have a significant adverse economic impact on my interest in this property. The things that I would like to point out are that that area has been an R3 zone, as far as I know, for over 30 years. And when the folks that moved into that area, or purchased homes there, did so with the advanced knowledge that they were buying a home in an R3 zone. So there's no surprise this isn't a change that has suddenly occurred. Secondly, the, at least on Andover, the street is directly, or the house that I own, for example, is directly across the street from the Athens Apartments, which is obviously a multi-unit, one of the larger multi-unit apartments in Athens. And on the corner is the Andover Court Apartments. So changing the zoning will not change the character or nature of the neighborhood. You're going to continue to have a large student population in this neighborhood. Additionally, if you look at the existing restrictions that the city zoning and housing codes have in place, you must provide parking already into an R3 zone if you're going to rent one of these dwellings. And you are also limited to the number of bedrooms, that you can only have one person per bedroom. And you must have a parking space required for each bedroom that you occupy under the existing rules. So it's very doubtful that most of these houses would be sold at any point and converted into student housing, simply because of the existing parking restrictions. Additionally, as was pointed out by my neighbors, and I think I am a good neighbor, there is a variance needed that would be required even under the existing zoning that is there for someone to go in and change a home or a house to a different use than would meet the housing code restrictions. And finally, I can tell you that, at least with my property, and of course, there is always the possibility that it could be sold, and I'm currently grandfathered, by the way, and it will remain a student rental as long as I own it, that I take care of my property, and I mow the grass. I don't have my tenants do that. I pay to have that done. I have, if you look at the improvements to this property, I would challenge anybody on Berkeley or Andover Drive to show me where they have put more money for improvements into their property than I have, since I bought it eight years ago, including new roof, new gutters, new downspouts, new wiring, been painted, had chimney repairs, et cetera. It also pertains to the outside and exterior of the home. If there are any tenants in my property that have a problem with garbage, for example, I don't know if this was my property or not, my phone number is publicly listed in the phone book. And all anyone has to do is simply pick up the telephone and make a phone call, and I will assure you that that situation would be remedied within 24 hours. I think that if you look at the history of the property that I've owned, that I have been a very good neighbor and a very good landlord, and that I take a very great deal of pride in the property that I own. And so I think that I care for that, and I can go back and, I think, prove it, that piece of property, as well as anybody who's a permanent resident there, as I said before I lived there. So I would hope the Council will take all of these points into consideration before they totally rezone an area that, for the last 30 years, has been a R3 zone, simply because of the economic impact it would have upon my holding and my property interest there in that neighborhood. So thank you for your consideration.
And our last signatory is Nancy Clark.
I'm Nancy Clark, and I live at 22 Berkeley Drive. I've lived there for 25 years. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Number one, Mr. Lusti says he dares anyone to, that anybody's put any more money into their property than he has, I can match all of those things he's done, plus a lot more. And I've done that with the idea of living there as long as I can, and that I intend the sale of my property to be a large part of my retirement money, or money that I need. I think the rental properties in the area will lower the value of my house. We live out in the far end of town, and even though you have rules that cover zoning issues and parking problems and garbage and these kind of things, they don't get, we don't get the benefit of it in our area unless we call and call and call. There's, at the two rental units on the street, there's five to six cars at a time, not people that are living there, but their friends. They don't park, they don't park close to the curb, things like that. The trash, and I'm not talking about Mr. Lusti's trash, the other trash cans laid out in the street for a week last, last, two weeks ago, and the code people and the police people, you know, go by every day, and no one stops to do anything about it. They routinely park in front of the fire hydrant, and the police do not, they go by and wave and go on by. So we're not, we don't get the benefit of the city code that you would if you were living in closer to the city, I don't think. But everyone on the street, all 25 lots, have signed that petition, with the exception of Mr. Lusti, Mr. Thornton, who has the house right next door to mine, and then there's a vacant lot that has not said yes or no, that we couldn't get ahold of.
Thank you. Okay, we've heard from all the people who've signed to speak. We will schedule a committee meeting to discuss this. As I said earlier, we'll schedule that meeting at the end of this session of Council later this evening. You can certainly call the clerk's office in the morning and know when that is. At the committee meeting, Council will discuss the issues. Again, we'll take comments from the audience, so you may come back and talk to us and ask questions, and we'll have more of a conversation at that time. And so we will close the public hearing. Thank you for coming.
We're not going to run the lead in, we're going straight to council.
Yeah.
Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, July 18th, 2005. It is on or about 7:30 PM. We do have a forum with all members of council present. Are there any communications anyone would like to share? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Abel.
We've done some changes on the Coventry-York area administratively since your last council The equipment, we made a request to the contractor to go with lighter equipment so that we're only doing maybe 15 tons at a time on a loaded truck. They couldn't meet that. So by mutual consent, we ended that contract and went to the second highest bidder, asked them if they could meet that, or second lowest bidder. They could, and so we continued with city crews and the second low bidder on that. York has got a base code down, and some of Coventry does, but the rain over the weekend and earlier tonight, we still have a mess in the middle where it was in bad shape. We'll have to let that dry out for a while before we try to get back into that. We'll probably be able to do some curb work prior to that. And hopefully by the change outs and using some city crew, although that's just really a transfer from construction to operating dollars in a way, but it will hit the capital project probably a little less that way. So I just wanted you to be aware of that change that I've made. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. City Auditor Kathy Heck.
Well, I just wanted to let everyone know that the auditors have come and gone in less than two weeks' time, which is really good. We were ahead of schedule last year, although the reason we were behind wasn't the fault of our office or these auditors. But our exit conference should be held about two months sooner than it was last year. And any comments that we or management citations that we need to address, we'll be able to address sooner. But I just wanted to thank council that although we didn't have our financial records approved last year for this audit, and it is commented on this year, at least we were able to show them that we have started that since we received our audit at the end of last year. Thanks.
Law Director Hunter.
Mr. President, I neglected to ask the clerk to request an executive session, but off-letting a short executive session on negotiations tonight.
Could we have a motion to amend the agenda?
Move to amend the agenda to include an executive session, second.
Motion and a second as a further discussion of the law director's request. All those in favor of amending the agenda to include an executive session?
Aye.
Those opposed, the agenda has been amended. Thank you. Member Dampke.
Mr. President, move acceptance of the financial reports from the auditor for the period ended June 30, 2005. There, I have some here and I, are there, and there are copies in the office. Okay?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the financial reports provided by the city auditor as a further discussion. All those in favor of accepting the reports?
Aye.
Those opposed, the reports have been accepted. Ordinances for third reading, O 6105, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 13, Chapter 13.07, miscellaneous offenses, Section 13.07.04, discharging weapons. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O 6105.
Second.
This ordinance clears up a problem that was discovered in the Athens City Code when a local civic club asked for permission to fire black powder weapons in a reenactment event this fall. Our code doesn't allow that. So this inserts some language that will allow reenactments and also make legal for the first time we discovered the firing of ceremonial salutes at military funerals and ceremonial events.
Is there a further discussion on ordinance 61? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 6505, an ordinance authorizing architectural design permits in construction for the renovation of the Arts West Community Facility and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson.
Mr. President, I move to adopt 6505.
Second.
This ordinance is actually for the city to front the money that the Arts West Facility received in a grant from the Oblanus Foundation, plus of $6,000 in addition to that that's projected is that we will have income in donations and from events to add to that.
Is there a further discussion on ordinance 6505? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. O 6605, an ordinance establishing the wellhead protection area as Title 39 of the Athens City Code and amending Athens City Code Title 23 zoning, Section 23.04.11, to designate the wellhead protection area as an overlay zone. Again, member Patterson.
Mr. President, I move to adopt O 6605.
Second.
Mr. President, this is an ordinance just establishing the wellhead protection area as an official part of our zoning maps, designating where the wellhead protection law is in effect. And along with that, we altered the language slightly of our own inclusion of what can be included in overlay zones, changed the language from such as to including but not limited to, just in a matter of clarification.
Very good. Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 6605?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. O 6705, an ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from President to Carpenter on October 29th and 30th, 2005, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens Halloween weekend. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O 6705.
Second.
This ordinance is one of the three ordinances we use to address the Halloween weekend, and this one just officially closes the street so that we can appropriately set it up to handle the crowd.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of O 6705?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The ordinance has been adopted. O 6805, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on October 29th and 30th, 2005, Halloween weekend. Again, member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O 6805.
Second.
This ordinance just suspends the Athens City noise ordinance in that section where the Halloween street party will occur until 3:00 AM.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of O 6805?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Again, six one. The ordinance has been adopted. O 7005, an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 23 zoning, Chapter 23.03 general regulations and permitting modifications, Section 23.03.08 yard regulations. Again, member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O 7005.
Second.
This ordinance amends the zoning code to allow the construction of temporary handicap access ramps if someone, that it would allow it to encroach into the setback without going through the Board of Zoning Appeals, that that could be approved administratively. They need to be temporary ramps, but it's just to make sure that people will be able to access their homes.
Is there a further discussion on ordinance 7005? Member Wile.
This has been occurring actually in the past, up to discretion of the Service Safety Director, and it's good that we're putting it in code. Again, what he's been doing is addressing needs for various people in the immediacy in terms of age and, as I say, disability. So I think it's a good idea.
Further discussion on ordinance 7005? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. O 7105, an ordinance terminating tax abatements authorized by the City of Athens to TS Trim Incorporated. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of O 7105.
Second.
In March of this year, the County Tax Incentive Review Council met to officially end the tax, two tax abatements that have been granted to TS Trim. Athens City Council had signed off on those in 1997 and 2001. And we just, we just need to take this action to officially end these tax abatements.
Is there a further discussion on O 7105? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. O 7205, an ordinance continuing the tax abatements authorized by the City of Athens for the HBL Center. Again, member Sands.
The same meeting, Mr. President, I move adoption of O 7205.
Second.
The same meeting of the Tax Incentive Review Council voted to continue the tax abatement that is in effect for the HBL Center, and since council had authorized that in the beginning, we need to vote to continue this abatement also.
Is there a further discussion on ordinance 7205?
Let me just mention that this abatement is scheduled to go through December of 2008.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 7205?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Now ordinances for second reading, O 6905, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04 vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on October 29th and 30th, 2005, Halloween weekend. Member Dampke.
Mr. President, move to table O 6905.
Second.
I believe that there's still some discussion that needs to happen with this ordinance, and I appreciate an opportunity to have that in the committee.
Further discussion?
It's a good idea.
I would point out, I would point out that even with the recess, there would be time to have a discussion in September, pass the ordinance under suspension, and have it take effect in time for Halloween. It does not have an emergency clause, but we would have enough time, I believe, to get that done. Anyway, just a little more information.
Is there further discussion on tabling O 6905? All those in favor of tabling the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been tabled. O 7505, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Joseph Lemoli, owner 270 East State Street, to construct a deck that will encroach on the city right of way. Ordinance 7605, an ordinance authorizing the payment of a prior year bill and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson.
Mr. President, I move to suspend on O 7605.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is because it is a prior year's bill, and the money is available, it's, the check's been there since April, and I just moved this on through.
We have a motion and a second to suspend council rules on ordinance 7605. Is there a further discussion on suspension of the rules on law? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of whatever number it was, 7605.
Second.
This is a transportation bill from a previous year, and the amount is $12,700. And it is a bill that relates to the regional transportation that goes through Athens daily. It's a contract situation.
Is there a further discussion on adoption of O 7605? Member Wile.
This is essentially, we're operating for pass-through for the university so they can have their buses, we can get Lakefront to stop.
Correct.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 7605?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinances for first reading, O 7805, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a consent agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the rehabilitation of two bridges over East Union Street and declaring an emergency. Member Wile.
Okay, this is essentially to redo and rebuild the bridges off of 33 and 50. If you look in your, we discussed this at the last Transportation Committee meeting, I guess that was last Monday. Essentially, we are the LPA, Local Public Agency, and this is basically contract and coordinate with ODOTs.
No, East State Street.
East State Street. Did I, what did I say? Does it say?
We need to, I was wondering how to pronounce it when I was talking about there.
We did Union already.
We're going to give us one for?
I couldn't figure out where this was.
Do they want to give us one for you?
With our parliamentarians' permission, I would like, in the discussion and adding that part of the record, can we recognize that as a typo and substitute? I'm sorry.
I'm just moving on you.
Okay. Well, we are recognizing this as a typo. Go ahead.
I have no problem with doing a bridge on East Union.
Except then we'd have to pay for it, and I think this was covered.
Yeah, okay. I assume there's going to be no extra cost. I think the discussion we had was if we had extra bells and whistles we want to put on. As far as I know, there are none in the works. And that's about it. I don't need to suspend rules on this, I think the bidding doesn't go till October, I think, mayor said.
Further discussion? O 7905, an ordinance closing a portion of Union Street from Court Street to College Street on Thursday, October 6, 2005, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM for an alternative fuel car show during Ohio University's Energy Awareness Week. Again, member Wile.
This is one of our street closings. I think this has occurred, at least from my memory, two or three times already. I know it was last year when I was up here. Essentially, the university has electric cars, there are biodiesel cars that show up. It's more like a show of various energy sources. I know I've been there for the photo attacks, people displaying things, as well as watching people pour frying grease into their car to make it run, or their diesel pickup truck. And as I say, this is just a closing in front of, you know, Union Street.
Further discussion? O 8005, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvements and/or local transportation improvement program for issue two funds and to execute contracts as required. Member Wile.
I'd like to move to suspend rules on 8005.
Second.
Essentially, the suspension is because this grant cycle, we're not actually sure of the deadline, but it's coming up. We believe it's going to be early October, if not September.
It was early September.
Early September, if you're in favor by the mayor.
Okay, so this is the reason for suspension. This is to apply for the next round of issue two monies.
We have a motion and a second to suspend council rules on ordinance 8005. Is there a further discussion on suspension of the rules on law? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Those opposed, the rules have been suspended.
I move adoption of O 8005.
Second.
Essentially, this is authorizing the mayor to submit an application. Our last application is to essentially do the streets around the middle school. We don't have a target right now for the next one, but as I said, the cycling is such that it would take time. It's.
I know.
Union to?
Union to the bridge. Paul, could you repeat that? Paul, could you repeat that?
Blue line to the bridge, essentially on West Union. We're talking about doing various parts of the streets that need repair, major repair, and this is the application for this type of stuff. And the faster we get it through, the better.
Further discussion on ordinance 8005? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. O-8105, an ordinance vacating approximately .80 acres of East Union Street from the university terrace to Stewart Street to Ohio University. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this ordinance would approve the vacation of what we know as Jeff Hill and then the portion of East Union Street from the bottom of Jeff Hill to Stewart Street, vacating it to the university who plans to develop pedestrian walkways. We have a rendering of what something might look like on Jeff Hill to allow better pedestrian access. We were concerned about access to our water and sewer lines there. This ordinance addresses that by retaining utility easements for the width of the existing street, not just identifying 10 feet, but the whole width of the street. There's also a whereas in the ordinance which says the City of Athens is not committed by this ordinance to repair or replace water and sewer lines in conjunction with construction of a pedestrian walkway. So, that's the ordinance.
Further discussion on ordinance 8105? Member Wile.
I still have a problem with this. We're getting nothing from it. We still need the right-of-way for the easements. I question whether it's good for the good of the city to do this. I may sound strident, but it kind of reminds me of my dealings with my older brother. He used to have lots of plans, and most of the time they were better for him than me, and I grew out of that. And that's probably the stridency. Last week I was walking around, essentially thinking, this is like somebody coming up to me and saying, "I will wax and polish your car, just give me the title. I'll detail it, just give me the title. And I'll let you drive it once in a while if you really need to." That's the easement part. I don't see any reason why we should give it to them. I know we were talking about trying to get some kind of monies back for the piping, which didn't do there. All we're doing now is pleading that they don't do it immediately, so we don't have to spend the money this year on it. We're going to need this street. I, and it's not a working street right now, so maybe that analogy of a car, maybe it's a junk car, maybe it's a car that's sitting there and saying, "I'll detail for it, you just pay for the wax, but give me the title to it." But we're going to need this. This is no, you think downtown is going to get any less crowded and congested over time? We may not need this street, it's a lousy street. It's a hillside. It's right now a pedestrian walkway, as is right now. If it's unsafe, we can put cyclone fences around it. That's not going to stop the students either. You know, they can still fall down, and you can make it all, now you're bringing it, it's still going to, still going to fall down. But we shouldn't be giving to them. You know, I have problems with the whole thing. I'm not sure whether I should call up the Ohio Ethics Commission and ask them why city employers are walking, and university people are giving this away from the city. There's no reason to do this. And that's my rant, and I'll say it again next time. I'll say it longer, and if I can think of better arguments, I'll say it again a third time, because that's what it is. It's giving something away that's precious, that we won't get back. We don't have alleyways up on Court Street right now, and we wish we did. We talk about trying to close Court Street and make a pedestrian mall. You can't do that because there's no alleyways. That was poor planning. That was poor planning 100 years ago, or maybe whenever they burnt down the city last time. But this, how many streets go, how many streets to the east go up to Court Street and connect? The nearest one is Mill Street. After that, it's Race, and they own Race. And after that, it's what? Where do you, where do you get up, where do we get off taking an accessway to our uptown area? On a song, on a dance, on a thing? The email we got from Mr. Kautowski, what is it, June, July 6th, okay, saying that they provided us with 9.6 acres, they did not provide us with it, they give us easements, let's give them easements. The fact that they can't build on it because of his arrangement of the capital improvements, that's their problem. We want to do something with it? We can appropriate money, we'll put sod on it and sprinkle it forever. And it won't stay, of course, they'll roll up the sod and use it as, I don't know, something, you know, race down it or whatever. But this is a waste. This is not in our interest at all. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on ordinance 8105? Ordinance 8205, an ordinance, I'm sorry. Yes. Come forward, please.
Muriel Grimm, Canterbury Drive. There are four processes for solving problems. The first is to clearly define the problem. The second is to gather all the pertinent data. The third is to analyze all the possible solutions, and then the fourth is to choose the best solution. And I've been watching this particular issue now for several weeks, and up until very recently, I didn't see any of the first three steps in problem-solving applied. Recently, you did pull in getting data and getting some information. And I'm just wondering whether, you're moving too quickly on this, whether there aren't other solutions, because I don't think you've clearly defined the problems yet. And I really think that you should stop and think a little bit and maybe look at whether there are other solutions and analyze them, and require this of people who bring these suggestions to you. If I bring you a suggestion, I would hope that you would require all of these steps to have happened. And then, I guess, another possible way to amend it would be, instead of just giving them the street, maybe you could trade for .8 acres, like maybe .8 acres adjacent to the right-of-way at the end of Morris Avenue.
Thanks, Muriel. Other comments from the audience? Seeing none. O-8205, an ordinance amending the 2005 appropriation ordinance and the 2005 inter-fund transfer ordinance. Member Pamkey?
Mr. President, move that we would consider O-8205 under suspension.
Second.
Reason for the suspension, which comes at the recommendation of the auditor's office, is that this, in the interest of the welfare of the citizens of Athens, we appreciate being able to have the proper amount appropriated to repay the parking garage.
Getting more creative. Is there, we have a motion and a second for consideration of O-8205 under suspension of council rules. Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Move adoption of O-8205.
Second.
Thank you. In Section 2, we are increasing the appropriation from the, to the debt fund by $15,000. We're wanting to pay down some of the debt, and this aligns our appropriations with our dollars that we have to pay. If anyone would like to add to that, feel free. Be creative, too. Okay, that's it.
Okay. Motion and a second to adopt ordinance 8205. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Announcements and other business? Member Wile.
I have no plans for a committee.
Paul, I thought I saw it in.
No. Claim is my favorite here.
Member Sands.
We had a public hearing tonight about a rezoning request, and our next step is to have a committee meeting to discuss that. We could do it next Monday, or if it were okay with council members, we could schedule for 7 o'clock on August 1st, whatever the, whatever our first meeting is in.
September.
September, I'm sorry.
Six.
I can't, I can't.
Seven. It's the day after Labor Day.
Okay. On September 7th, at 7 o'clock.
Six.
Have our discussion, and possibly be ready to go with an ordinance at that time. It looks to me like the preference of council is to hold that discussion on September 7th, so I don't have a committee meeting either.
Sorry.
Six.
It's the day after Labor Day, so it's Tuesday. I said the 7th, I'm sorry, it's the 6th. I'm having a trouble with numbers tonight.
So you are asking for a committee meeting on the 6th?
On the 6th, but not next week.
Okay. So, are there any other committee meetings or any other meetings of council that it would be the pleasure of council to hold? Seeing none. Any other announcements or other business?
Mr. President?
Members Pamkey, yes. Good point.
This is a, this is a CD, and it says, "City of Athens Comprehensive Plan" on it. These are available from the clerk, so if you would like to have the PDF version of the two documents that comprise the plan, the draft of the comprehensive plan that is now going forward to the Planning Commission for their consideration, please call the clerk. We also have hard copies, but we urge you to do it this way. Save a tree. Several trees. Several. Anyway, thank you to, these were done by our folks in the government channel with their new device that creates CDs, so the CD burners work. Anyway, two be, two arrive shortly on the website, as I understand.
My understanding, it is there now, so if you'd like to even save a CD, just visit the city's website, and you will see that it is there.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Any other announcements?
No, definitely no.
Item number nine on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to speak before council? Seeing none, and having amended our agenda to add an executive session, do I have a motion to move into executive session?
Move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations to include all members of council, the president, the law director, the auditor, and the mayor.
We're going to allow him in?
Second.
Aye.
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 Carol.
Hi, I'm sorry.
Okay, after our executive session, we will have no other items before us other than adjournment. We will take about 10 minutes to move into executive session. Thank you.